So let me just start by introducing myself really quick. So like I said, my name's Nick. I'm a longtime tutor for both SATs, ACTs, but especially APs this time of year. And you know, those of you that have taken SAT, ACT, the AP exam has some features in common. We'll talk about some of the things that are similar with the multiple choice section for sure. And then I'm gonna drill into how to really go through the free response sections and what the AP is actually looking for. I think the number one thing that a lot of students run into trouble on is, you guys are very good analysts, you guys are very good writers, your classes have prepared you well, you got your beautiful shiny A in English. Then all of a sudden, there are really specific ways of organizing information that become really important on here. So we'll be looking really specifically at the AP exam scoring rubric. And I think I should be good to share this with you guys now. Okay. All right. And. Perfect. Start. Okay. So right off the bat, yes, AP literature and composition as opposed to language and composition, which we'll actually be presenting on later this week. If there's any of you who, like I did, took both AP English classes in the same year, which was kind of a lot. One more time, my name is Nick. I put a little quote on there that I think, you know, kind of illuminates a little bit about what can sometimes be really fun about literature, but also at the same time can be somewhat frustrating about it. So this was something my English teacher kind of gave to us at the beginning of our AP literature class in high school. "The mark of a man of letters is to make the obvious sound obscure." So a lot of times, literature, particularly older literature, can be quite intimidating just in terms of like understanding what's actually taking place on the page and like understanding what you're even reading. And a lot of times, like, there's this kind of pressure and tendency in classes when discussion can be an awesome thing. But sometimes when we're talking through stuff in class, it can sound like, you know, a lot of these interpretations or ideas are kind of coming out of nowhere. You know, I remember reading Shakespeare like in 7th grade. And you know, my teacher was talking us through all these themes in Romeo and Juliet. I don't know what the imagery of the stars, the star-crossed lovers, and what that imagery meant. And I literally raised my hand and I was like, "Mr. Cornish, are you sure that this is actually what's going on in this book?" And he said, "Yes." And like, as you read more and more Shakespeare and other authors, you will come to appreciate that they really do plant this stuff in there. So the reason I brought this up, you know, and it's a little bit snarky for sure, but it's important to remember that on here, they're testing you on what's more on the surface, what it's saying, what techniques they're using. Not so much diving a million miles beneath the surface and coming up with sort of elaborate theories about what the book might be out. It's what the book might be about. It's more focused on just figuring out what they're actually saying in a much more direct way. So with that in mind, let's dive in a little bit. We have three sections. First, we're gonna be talking about the overall test format. Then we're gonna be moving into the multiple choice section. And then finally, moving on to free response at the end. Cool. So. There we go. Okay, so section one is test format. So if you guys are taking your first AP, we'll talk about the scoring in a second. Like a lot of the other humanities APs, this is really a lot of the APs in general, even the non-humanities ones, it's broken into two sections. First off, you've got the multiple choice, it's gonna be one hour to do 55 questions. That's a fairly fast pace. I was likening this to SAT, ACT earlier. It's pretty much the same as the, well, it's slightly faster than SAT. A little bit slower actually than ACT, if you guys have taken that one. It represents 45% of your overall score. Again, we'll come back around to how they actually calculate your score in a moment. And it's broken into five passages. At least two of those will be prose, and that can include drama play like Shakespeare, for example. And two of them will be poetry. The third can either be prose or poetry. Important to know that each one of those five passages will have eight to 13 questions each. So you guys will actually see, I have a sample test coming up later on. And it will say, "Passage one is questions 1 through 14." I promise I'm not lying to you. The passages are slightly shorter today, or not that they're shorter, but that they're slightly more consistent about the length of each one. So once you guys wrap up the multiple choice, you'll go straight into the free response section. Now, that's two hours to do three questions. You guys have seen at this point in your classes, or if you're self-studying, you've probably seen enough materials to know that those three questions are definitely not multiple choice questions. They're substantial essay-length responses. You know, I want to make sure I say this number loud and clear, 40 minutes per essay. Remember that, you want to divide your time up somewhat evenly between all three of them. So that will make up 55% of the score. The three essays, a poetry analysis, a prose analysis, and finally, a literary argument. Where the poetry and prose analysis, yes, they'll give you a passage to work from. But with the literary argument, you guys are actually expected to bring your own knowledge of a particular work to the table. We're gonna talk about some ways to prepare well for that a little bit down the road. All right, so as promised, again, if this is your first AP class, you know, exciting for you guys. Don't be intimidated, these tests are hard but manageable. Hard, fair, and manageable is kind of how I always describe them. So your score, if it hasn't already been explained, is 1 through 5. Typically, a 4 or 5 on this test will be considered credit at most colleges. 3 is considered passing. Once in a while, a school will offer credit for that, but that's pretty unusual. Generally speaking, literature or language and composition will place you will place you out of like a first year of writing, a writing class, which is required of most folks. So you know, not the biggest deal in the world in terms of saving you credit, but hey, lets you take an extra class that maybe, you know, you find especially interesting or even save a little bit of time if you have a lot of AP credits at the end of school where you can graduate a little early. I put the percent breakdown by score there at the bottom of the slide for what it's worth, but I'm actually much more interested in that third bullet point, you guys. To score a 5, you need to get about 75% of the available points. Now, sometimes I say this and people are kind of shocked because, you know, we kind of automatically liken a 5 to an A. And in fact, that's what it's supposed to correspond to in the College Board's language, where, you know, scoring a 5 would be like getting an A in this college course. "To get an A, though," you might be thinking, "I'm supposed to get 90% or higher on a test. All of a sudden, I can get a C and get a perfect score." Well, yeah. As you guys know, though, the questions are substantially more difficult than a lot of what you'll be seeing. However, not so substantially more difficult that getting 75% is impossible. In fact, I think with good preparation and careful strategic kind of reasoning throughout the test, it's very, very, very doable. And I think a lot of times, if anything, people don't get a 5, not because the test is too hard, but just because they don't know what they're supposed to be doing on the test and in the written sections very well. So to clarify on that last point a little bit, when we said that there were, you know, the multiple choice was 55 questions, made up 45% of the score, what they'll do is they'll calculate, okay, so you have 55 available points on the multiple choice. Then what they'll do is there's only 18 available points on the free response. So basically, what they do is it's not that it only counts for a third, it counts for more than half. They'll take the percentage that you got right on the free response, the section that you got right out of the multiple choice, they'll weight it to that 55-45 balance. And then they'll put that into their calculator, which will spit out your final score. All right, cool. And as you guys know, we're doing a Q and A after this. So if you have any more particular questions about the scoring, I'm happy to discuss it in a bit more detail. All right, so let's move into some of the multiple choice strategies and techniques here right off the bat. Now, like I said before, a lot of, if you guys have taken SAT, ACT, past AP exams, any kind of past multiple choice test, a lot of the strategies that are in play on those come back here as well. Those same principles are really, really important, even on these often really intimidating and difficult passages. So with that in mind, and I'm gonna throw out there what I suggest you guys do. Now, I'm sure that I'm not the only voice you guys are hearing in terms of how to go through an AP exam passage set. You guys probably have your teachers at school, you've probably got friends, you've probably found online resources, maybe your test prep books, all have different suggestions. This is my suggested approach. It will work if you take bits and pieces from it. And I promise, I won't hurt my feelings if you only do some of it or don't do any of it and try another way. But at least let's talk through why I think it's best to approach things this way and why I think it makes the most sense to start by simply reading the passage. A lot of people like to go look at the questions first, and I hear that as really, really popular test prep advice. And I think the reasoning just goes that, okay, well, if you look at the questions first, then you know what to focus on in the passage. Problem is, on here, because the passages are short, number one, you're gonna end up reading the whole thing anyway. And if you, in the course of doing those questions, and if you read the whole thing with only one question in mind, you're likely to overlook details that might actually make it a little bit more efficient later on when you're being asked about those details in future questions. So yes, while I see the temptation to be like, "Okay, I want to read this with a particular focus", I think you're better served just reading it quickly once at the beginning. You do not need to agonize over every single word, however, don't skim, right? Actually read it, try to absorb it, try to read it comfortably, but don't slow down just because you're confused or you don't understand a section. Probably, you know, if you're taking the paper version of this test, put a little star or an asterisk down and, but put a star and asterisk down next to a difficult section and you'll be sure to come back to that if you are asked about it. It's just kind of like, don't worry about it if they never ask you about it. My other comment on reading it initially is to try to avoid coming to any kind of final conclusion on like what the passage was about. And I know this is hard because this is such like an automatic muscle that we are learning to use in literature classes, is like coming to some kind of like, okay, what was the point of that work? What was the real meaning of it? What was the significance of that? So that muscle, though, all of a sudden, you have to set it aside when doing multiple choice questions. Number one, because your interpretation or my interpretation may not necessarily be the College Board's same interpretation. Or alternately, they just may never ask you about the overall meaning of the passage. They may only ask you about individual sections. And if you're kind of focusing so much on what was the larger point, a lot of times, that's gonna be really distracting from focusing on individual lines, individual stanzas in a poem, et cetera. Okay, so once you've read through it, you know, and again, not come to a conclusion, just read through it, in order to get a decent roadmap of what's happening in the passage, then go to the questions. This is another part of my point about not doing the questions first, is that certain questions are quite conceptual, right? Things about the main theme, the main idea, maybe questions about the purpose of the passage or the purpose even just of a particular section in the passage. All of those require us to go beyond what's being stated directly and maybe piece together multiple parts of it and see what they have in common. So my suggestion is to instead start really, you know, even if you're, you know, going ahead and reading the questions first, start with the vocabulary and detail questions, asking what individual sections of the passage mean. You know, it could be something like, "The author uses," like where the author refers to all of the, you know, refers to "which of the following as a reason for his happiness." Or maybe, you know, "the author uses which of the following literary devices." So things like that that are just factual. It's just a matter of looking at the passage and finding to see if it's actually there. But by starting with those, number one, we're avoiding doing the bigger picture questions. And number two, when doing these, a lot of times, they can kind of explain difficult or confusing portions of the text. Like, if I didn't understand the third stanza, but a question asks me about it, I can go back, read that stanza, and work through the multiple choice questions. And by eliminating some of the other, some of the other clearly wrong answers, I can get it down to a much more precise picture of what the point of that stanza actually was or what that stanza actually meant. And all of a sudden, once I get the right answer, I have this beautifully articulated expression of what that stanza meant, courtesy of the College Board writing that as the correct answer right there. So when you can narrow in a bit more, it gives you a chance to reread, it gives you a chance to build comprehension. That's gonna be really valuable ammo when you circle back around to those bigger picture questions. Frankly, though, in terms of distinguishing between like those fact-finding, you know, detail-oriented questions and the more conceptual questions, as I call them, it's less important than skipping anything confusing or difficult. You see a question you don't understand or you have no idea where to get started, skip it and come back. You know, the detail versus conceptual is basically just a proxy for easy and hard questions. If it's too hard to remember it that way, do easy first, then hard questions. The other big thing is that you absolutely, as on other tests, you have to keep moving on this test. So part of why we want to skip over anything that we find confusing is we don't want to sit there and stare at it. If it ends up being that we don't really have time to look at it, we just have to bubble something in and move on, we are fine with that. We only need to get a C on this test and we are getting college credit. So my suggestion, and these passages do vary somewhat in length, right? So you've got the eight-question passages, usually those are towards the end of the section. And you've got the 13-question passages, usually those are towards the beginning. Even on the first few passages, you don't want to spend more than that allotted average of about 12 minutes per passage. It's not gonna kill you if you go to 13, 14 minutes on one of those 12 or 13-question passages, because you'll probably, you'll make up for some of the time later on, but do not go beyond that. I personally just set a hard and fast rule at 12 minutes per passage, no matter what. Because I know that if I, like, if I don't have a clear rule, I'm gonna talk myself into how I can figure out a question, I'm gonna end up losing time and missing an opportunity to do lots of easy questions on later passages. So, you know, different people like, you know, are at different levels of like comfort, interacting with a clock and interacting with a watch, basically like constantly flipping back and forth while doing the test. So you don't want the watch to take over your test experience, but you do want to keep an eye on it, make sure you don't go too much more than 12, no matter what. I suggest you set a hard limit for yourself as well, maybe 12 minutes, maybe 13 for the longer ones. But keep it consistent and have a clear rule for yourself. Even if you don't have time to think all the way through a hard question, bubble your answer and move on. There is a huge bank of much easier questions waiting for you right in those subsequent passages. My last comment on approaching this is something else from just general good test prep, and that's using process of elimination. You guys want to be thinking in terms, first of all, of what's wrong, not trying to pick the right answer. So as I highlighted in that first bullet, the wrong answers on this test are wrong. It's not just that they're not as good, it's not that they're like plausible interpretations that could work, it's that they don't work. So let's think about where the College Board is coming from in creating this test. So literature in particular, it's not even history, where either something happened or it didn't. It either happened in 1797 or it happened in 1798, it's one or the other. Literature, as we know, is open to interpretation. Again, that's the double-edged sword, where that's one of the great things about it, one of the things that makes it difficult to test. So who's to say that my interpretation is right, or your interpretation is right, or the College Board's is right, or anyone else's? The College Board knows this, and they dodge the issue by making the wrong answers explicitly wrong. So if you're spending this time looking at what answer makes sense, or, oh, this seems right, or I remember that from the passage, you're gonna miss a ton of questions for no reason. What you want to be doing instead is focusing on incorrect elements in the answers. So what one pattern across the board is that there are typically three reasons that answers are wrong on a lot of these standardized tests. One of the main things that they plant is aspects of the question that directly contradict the passage. We are gonna look at some examples shortly. So they contradict the passages and they say the opposite of it, or they say something that the passage directly goes against. So if you start by looking over those, usually you can scratch off at least one or two answers without too much difficulty. And then from there, it's that second bullet, right? So absent, you know, look for things that they say in the answers, right? Where it's not really in the passage, maybe you could talk yourself into it, but if you guys were in literature class and having a discussion, your teacher would be like, "That's a total reach." Right? Where you're just stretching the text a little bit, you've gone beyond what it's actually saying, and you've moved on to, you've moved on to like, kind of like a kind of out-there interpretation that may be super interesting, but is not actually directly supported in the book. So if you're seeing an answer and you're like, you catch yourself doing that literary mode of trying to piece together how it could be right, or it seems kind of related, but they're not actually saying it, that's not a could-be-right answer, that's not a not-as-good answer, that's a wrong answer. And that's one of the toughest adjustments to make on all these tests, is transitioning from knowing that when they don't say something outright, it's not could-be, it's wrong. Last thing to look out for is that they love to take material and put it out of context. That may be repeating particular words and phrases from the passage. It may be restating different ideas, but in a way that doesn't answer the question that you're actually being asked. So keep those three in mind, contradictions, you know, things that they don't state, and anything out of context that doesn't answer the question. All right. Let's do a quick exercise here, you guys. So like I said, this does say questions 1 through 14, I promise, it's 8 through 13 these days. Take a couple minutes, you guys. I'm gonna set a quick timer, I'm actually just gonna run like a four-minute timer here. It's okay if you guys don't get through to the end of this, but I want you to glance over the poem as we talked about. And then I want you guys to try to get down answers for all three questions. In a second, I'm gonna show you guys the answers, we're gonna discuss the differences between the different types of questions. So go for it, take a couple minutes to do it. I'm gonna give you guys about another minute, just to see if you can get answers down. I think it's gonna help our discussion of these a little bit. All right, cool. So you guys, that there, I actually ended up a little bit shorter than I thought. That was about three minutes. So that's around the pace you guys want to be on. I was gonna give you, I was gonna give you four minutes, but I think it actually makes more sense to just kind of pause there and be like, that's, you know, that's slightly faster. You guys ideally would be close to done with number three at that point. If you were significantly behind that, or if you were, so if you were significantly behind that, you're probably spending too much time on a question you should be skipping right off the bat. Or if you were still in kind of in the reading process or just getting to the questions, my take is that you're spending too long with the passage. I don't think that the passages tend to reward a really deep understanding of the overall passage, like we said. They tend to reward the ability to go back, focus in on individual sections and understand those well. We just don't know what those sections are gonna be until we get to the questions. So a couple things right off the bat. Number one, question number one is a question that I would be skipping immediately. "The poem deals with" is clearly a conceptual question, right? We could go through and we could find these individual elements, but it's going to be, it's going to require us to interpret and understand what sections are really saying and reflecting and talking about. That is gonna be so much easier to do after we've done a lot more straightforward questions or even questions that are just about smaller sections of the passage. As far as I'm concerned, I would even skip number two, where it's asking, yes, only about one stanza of the passage, but it's asking about what the stanza, not what it says, but what it serves to do. So if we're being asked what something says, we just gotta go read it and understand it. If it's asking what it serves to do, we have to not only read it, but also think about it again in that broader context of the passage. The more questions we've done, the more we've gone back and reread, the better of a feel we're gonna have for that broader context of the passage when doing something like number two. Number three, I think, is a much more doable question right off the bat. It only refers to two lines, lines 11 to 12. It is asking about the implication as opposed to just the straightforward meaning of them. But if we're good about process of elimination, we should be able to do that one. I think that's a great question to start with, and it's gonna explain, you know, at least the second half of it. Quick note, if you guys, you know, aren't super familiar with doing this type of question where they ask about those certain lines, I would say read at least five lines before and five lines after, even in a poem. Make sure you have plenty of context for individual lines. Now that said, when you're answering the questions, though, your answer should be focused only on those lines, right? But the other lines can help explain what key terms or key ideas in those lines would be. All right, so I circled the correct answers on here. Let's quickly talk through these. I'm happy to go into a bit more detail in the Q and A, once I wrap up the presentation, about kind of why some of these wrong answers are right and wrong. I want to skip over number one because I think it's a little bit time-consuming and not tremendously illustrative of how to go through one of these questions with process of elimination here, because obviously, it's more a matter of finding these things than it is finding that they're not there. Big thing to notice, though, is that number one, if you didn't see it before, is an except question. So anything that is in the passage is a wrong answer. I see tons of people get tripped up on these all the time, for some reason, when they put it in all caps and makes it easier to overlook. So just keep a close eye on that. Let's talk about the second one. Actually, let's start by talking about the third one. "So describe the speaker's implication in lines 11 to 12." "So faithful indeed is the spirit that remembers after such years of change and suffering." I look at an answer like A, okay, "Only someone remarkably devoted," okay, I see that in faithful, "can retain the memory of an absent loved one over time." So remembers after such years of change and suffering. No, it doesn't mention a loved one, but maybe that's okay because of implication. Even though that looks pretty good, I am not bubbling that answer. I am looking at the other answers to make sure that I know what's wrong with them. So I look at B, "Only people who embrace a higher faith can successfully live with their grief." So there's clearly that connection between the word "faith" and the word "faithful" in there. This is one of those kind of taken-out-of-context-type ideas where they're matching a word, but it's not actually accurate, right? There's nothing that says that only people who embrace a higher faith. It doesn't specify that, even if it is saying that faithful people have an easier time managing suffering, it doesn't say only faithful people. That would be something we'd have to read way into, for him to be saying not just that some faithful people do, but only faithful people. With that, even, so, and to be clear, I'm saying that even if you're a little bit shaky on whether he's talking about actual religious people or not. So, you know, he's not referring to actual religious people, number one. But number two, even if he was, it's not clear that it's only those people. So for C, "Pain strengthens the soul so that the sufferer can move forward." Now, the strengthening of the soul part is not present in there. It's an idea that's plausible, pain strengthening the soul, it's almost a cliche. It's something that we know pretty well, but it's not something that's actually directly supported in the passage right there. So strengthening the soul, possible, but it's not there, we have to let that one go. D, "The bereaved must choose to forget the past in order to bear their losses." This, I would say, is more of a contradicted one, where if anything, these lines are talking about the spirit of remembering after years of change. about the spirit of remembering after years of change and suffering, not about forgetting. So the idea of forgetting is not present in there, except, except as like, you know, except as like, almost like a shadow of what's being said there, that sort of thing. Yeah, it's just the opposite of what they're saying. It's appealing in some ways, you know, maybe it would be like a great starting point for a literary discussion, but it's just not a multiple choice answer. Finally, E, people who dwell on the past are usually unable to move beyond their personal losses. That again, is just reaching beyond what it's saying. What it's saying is, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's faithful if you, if you, if you keep remembering someone after a long time. It doesn't say anything about being unable to. Maybe the person is unable to, maybe they're not, but there's no indication, one way or the other, on that specific point. Okay, so hopefully that was somewhat helpful in terms of illustrating what types of things to look out for. One of the really hard things you guys, for, for me to teach is, is kind of that, is kind of that moving between the answer as a whole and individual sections of it, but it is one of the most important skills. It's almost like you wanna look at each individual word and make sure it's reflected, and then look at the answer as a whole. Truth be told, it's a lot more complex than that, cause sometimes it requires looking at certain phrases and how they connect to each other to see where the answers break down. Again, happy to discuss this further in the Q and A, happy to discuss questions number one and two in particular, but I wanna keep moving and make sure we have enough time to talk about the free response. All right. Okay, so, uh, free response section. After a pretty tough hour of really grueling analytical multiple choice questions, all of a sudden, you gotta sit down and write some really kick butt literary analysis essays. So first thing to keep in mind, you guys in class have some great discussion points, you guys in your papers have some great points. These though, are like school essays in some way, but the scoring is so particular and so precise that you wanna really think of it as its own thing. So a teacher, a subjective reader, you know, someone who's trying to evaluate just the general feel for the quality of your analysis, is gonna be really taken with you doing like a deep dive, maybe on one particular point, you know, with really making a string of strong points, maybe on just one certain idea or something like that. However, on here, we will look at the scoring rubric. You are required to diversify your discussion a little bit and going into great depth, writing at length on a topic and explaining it to like a really extreme degree of perfection just isn't helpful. It's not worth your time, you don't have the time to do it. What you wanna do instead is do like, you know, a solid textual analysis where you're, you're explaining the use of certain techniques, just explaining how they're used in what might feel like kind of a superficial way, if you guys are super into literature. The truth is, 40 minutes is just not enough to do a really thorough analysis of like kind of the larger themes or ideas at work in one of these. Instead, it's kinda better for this test at least to kinda hack the scoring process and just pick up as many points as you can along with their rubric. So second bullet, I made reference to making sure you have a bank of books you know well, literary techniques or elements that you can use. This, I hope, is something you guys are talking about in your classes, the books that you guys are reading in, in your literature classes. There's no set curriculum for the course with literature, unlike, unlike how there is in, in other classes. You guys can read a lot of different things, and many of them are perfectly valid and able to use on here. It's good to have a bank of books you know for the third of the essays, which we'll get to, is the, uh, is, is the, is the literary technique, is, I'm sorry, the, the literary analysis essay. So I also mentioned knowing some literary techniques and elements. When I say techniques, I mean things like onomatopoeia, alliteration, anaphora, all that stuff that you guys are learning. Uh, I have a little bit more specific guidance coming up on, on what you actually do need to know and what you wanna have in your back pocket. Uh, but I also wanna mention the, the, the elements, we will come back to this point, but it's kind of like the bigger picture ways of analyzing a work, things like setting, character, et cetera. One more time, it is 40 minutes per essay working through, that is quick. I, I say outline there, you wanna be spending, in my opinion, you know, five to 10 minutes reading and outlining. I tend to go on the high side of that, because I like to get all my ideas sorted out on paper at the very beginning, so I kinda go for the 10 minutes and then I just get right into the writing. I think some people wanna start writing a little bit quicker sometimes, the outlining, cause they're kind of like married to this idea that they're going to like figure out their analysis better as they go along, or they're gonna discover ideas, or they'll kinda get into a groove writing. Like I said though, you guys, it's tough, because even if you're in a great groove and you're just like hammering this one point, it's like the greatest analysis you've ever done, it's not gonna score high on their rubric because of the way it's set up. So you wanna be really smart about making sure that your time is spent doing things that will get you points and not just things that produce, you know, a, a great essay for class. So, you know, each of the three essays, I said earlier, the whole section is worth 18 points, each of the three has scored zero to six, broken into, as we'll see, one point for the thesis, four points for evidence, and then one point for, uh, for complexity, is what they call, they, they call that the sophistication or complexity point, where it's basically like, hey, if you, if you did write a really great essay that meets the other criteria, yeah, you'll, you'll probably get a point, but there's lots of other ways to pick up on that point as well, without having to go crazy in depth on one point and missing other opportunities. Keep in mind as well, you know, we said that 75% was our benchmark for a five, that means getting four out of six on here. So if you guys can write a good thesis and get up to three points on your evidence, you guys are on pace for a five. If you write, if you write some really good stuff, that goes up to five or six points, you're giving yourself wiggle room on the others. So before we get to that rubric, and I do wanna spend a little bit of time with it, I wanna talk about the, the, what, what I meant by the, your, your kinda bank, so I refer to it as a literary bank. You guys are reading, I would guess, in the neighborhood of, I'm, you know, some of your classes might be reading six books, say, in depth, others might be reading more like 10 to 12, at, at a little bit of a quicker pace. I think that you wanna have four to five books that you know extremely well. My go-to is The Great Gatsby. Uh, it's my favorite book, I've read it every single year over the summer, like, uh, it's like, it's, it's actually become like a family tradition, everyone in my family reads it together on the longest day of the year. Takes most of the day, but, uh, it's, it's kind of a cool thing to get together and do. So that's a book that I know inside and out, and I can use it as an example for almost anything in that literary analysis essay, you know, just by knowing all the characters, the settings, the situations really well, I can come up with specific examples for almost anything. The beauty of that book in particular too, is that it's really flexible. You know, there's a lot of different characters, a lot of different ideas at play, so there's many different things that you can focus on. I'd be careful about some of the more experimental novels, like, you know, I, I love James Joyce as much as the next person, but, um, you know, something like Ulysses is gonna be really tough to like explain in a clear way, unless the, unless the, uh, you know, unless the question happens to specifically be about literary structure, or, uh, you know, maybe some, maybe a question that they might ask about allusions to other works. So, so the, um, the, I'm sorry, so, so on, on the, okay, so it's, so if it happens to be about allusions or like the structure of works, then, then, yeah, I mean, something like Ulysses might be appropriate, but otherwise, it could be, it could be a little bit more, uh, you know, it, it just might be hard to talk about like characterization in a book like that, for example. So that's why I say you want four to five, you know, you want something that with really clear character examples, maybe something with setting, something, maybe something with an unconventional structure or an overall design. But if you have four to five, that covers your bases depending on how they phrase the question. Okay, so then, um, I, I also mentioned having two pet elements that you personally tend to appreciate and notice the most. The elements that the, that the, uh, that the college board highlights are characterization, setting, structure, and perspective or point of view. Personally, I focus on characterization, that's my favorite aspect of literature, is like the representation of character. I always remember that scene at the end of, uh, the first chapter of The Great Gatsby, if you guys know it, where, you know, Nick Carraway, the narrator, has moved into his house, he's watching his very wealthy neighbor, who he hasn't met yet, but has thrown these like stupendous parties next door. He sees the guy, you know, after one of the parties walk out onto his lawn alone, just kinda stare out and then at the night sky and reach for this green light across the water, and it's just a beautiful scene, cause it introduces this character in, in, in an amazing way. And, and it presents him as mysterious and longing and kind of romantic all at the same time, just by having that one particular moment. So like, that for me, like, I always focus on the characterization, and it can even work, that's the biggest thing that I take away. How are the people presented? How, what, what are they all about? What are the things that the author is doing to give us that impression of the person? So that's something I come back to over and over, uh, and that's always something that I know I can write about if I'm stuck on a, on a difficult poem or on a difficult prose piece. I, my other one is structure, I really like looking at the way that, that, that the essay is, that, that the passage is organized. I, I, you know, I think that what they choose to introduce and what they choose to end up with are both pretty fascinating. So for you guys though, pick your two favorites, you wanna know enough about all four to be conversational in them, but pick your two favorites, cause a lot of times, the passages can kinda be analyzed in terms of any two of them. I also mentioned thorough familiarity with at least six literary techniques. You know, again, that's the onomatopoeia, anaphora, all that stuff. So you, you guys wanna know at least six, cause you wanna be able to bring them up in the absence of being able to have a really strong discussion about one of those larger elements. Uh, I did make another note though, where you don't wanna just be able to say, oh, look, he's got the bee's buzz going on in pass, in, uh, in line two, he's got some onomatopoeia, right? You wanna be able to say why onomatopoeia is relevant in this situation, right? Like why sensory detail is particularly effective for the author's purpose, you know? So, so for example, is he, you know, is he establishing like the, uh, like the sonic intensity of the scene, is he establishing like the, um, you know, the, the, the sort of like the, the, the union with animals, or like, you know, the lack of abstract thought in a particular character, they're just focused on sensations? So being able to, to take, to take a technique and then connect it to your analysis, that's just as important as knowing the terms themselves. Okay, so, um, you know, outlining some quick notes on that, really, really important. Like I said, I spend 10 minutes doing it, I suggest you guys spend at least five, if not 10. The key things to get down, and it doesn't sound like much, but if you've thought through these things, you know the, you know the structure of your essay. So you wanna have your thesis, you wanna have two to three topic sentences for your paragraphs, your topic sentences you guys need to connect to your thesis, right? So your topics sentence might be about setting, it might be about characterization, but it needs to explain how the setting or the characterization explains the thesis, how it's related to thesis, not just he uses characterization, or she uses setting, or uses setting, right? It's got to actually connect back to the thesis for that to work. That's hard to think about, because that, that requires you to really think through what your examples are, what lines, what material from the work you're using. I also mentioned use two examples for each paragraph. So that means like finding two things in the text, or thinking of two things in your, in your book that you're choosing for your literary analysis essay, and you writing those within it. So basically, you want a thesis that explains the connection between, as you see at the bottom of the page, an idea through this technique and this technique. Then you want two examples of the first technique, let's say characterization, you know, two things that they do to represent character, then two examples of how setting is reflected, and then in turn, how setting reflects the overall meaning of the work as well. Cool, so the, the other thing I suggest, the third, the, the fourth bullet that I have there for the key elements is a little bit more optional. It's, it's a concluding idea that opens up to, to a broader context. This is not as essential, but I think it helps to, this is kind of like having a frame on your argument. So if you're gonna describe how, you know, the, uh, the author is describing like the plight of an oppressed woman, maybe your frame or your concluding idea is that, you know, sort of like the, the long history of like, of downtrodden women, both in society and in literature, this author reflects that idea in this particular book by doing this, this, and this, right? Then at the end, you might say, you know, that, you might wrap up your essay by saying, okay, this, you know, this, this representation powerfully evokes, uh, this image that, um, that, you know, many women have struggled with and fought against throughout history. So I say concluding idea, I really mean more so framing idea, but again, slightly less essential. All right, so quickly, before we get to the scoring, so prose fiction and analysis, same scoring for both, we'll look at a rubric in a second. As with the, uh, unlike the multiple choice, actually, read the passage closely, get your pencil out, right? Uh, or if you're doing it digitally, you know, you, you definitely wanna be jotting stuff down, so noting any instances of your strongest literary techniques, think about how your pet elements are used, right? What's the characterization, note those for me, what's the structure of this? Why do they begin with this? Why do they end with this? What is the change between the beginning and the ending? I also said to just note anything else that you kinda, that basically that you like, anything that jumps out as interesting, exciting, or important. A lot of times, those are signals that like the author has done something effectively or successfully there, and you'll be able to use that, um, in, in, in your, in your analysis as well, cause it's probably a significant part. If like, I don't know, maybe there's no characters and you're a characterization person, um, maybe, maybe that would be a situation where you'd need to use your other pet element and then bring in maybe some of the other literary techniques, maybe some of the things that they use for, for, for sensory detail, for example. But again, happy to discuss that a little bit more in a minute. All right, so if you guys have not seen this, definitely get into this. This is on the AP website, this is on the college board website. This is the scoring rubric for poetry analysis, it is identical to the one for prose analysis, except it says scoring rubric for question one, uh, for question two, prose analysis for the second one. This, this is how the six points are actually given out, and this is why I'm making such a big deal out of why it's not necessarily a school essay. So look, the thesis is straightforward, you guys will probably all get this point, if you have done any reasonable amount of preparation for this test, just make sure you express an interpretation of it, right? The poem is about this, or the, or the passage is about this. Notice as we go in row B from one to two, um, to three to four, in terms of the evidence item first, we go from general evidence, we go to specific relevant evidence. So if you guys are able to point specific lines out in the passage, like if you're able to say the author uses onomatopoeia in line two, the bee's buzz, you got two points, right? So you, you, you wanna be doing, you know, two examples for each one, but in theory, that would qualify for two points, uh, for two points right there, provided you also had the, uh, provided you also had the commentary right, we'll come back to that. With three, provide specific evidence to support all claims in a line of reasoning, four is the same thing. Notice the difference between two and three. This is the difference between getting a three or four, which is only getting two points, and getting a four or five, getting three points in addition to your thesis, is that your evidence supports a claim. So the bee's buzz, in order to reflect how the character is only absorbed in the sensory detail they're surrounding, is not really thinking about anything. I'm totally making that up. But, but something, something like that, some way of connecting what you've used to the larger theme of the work, or what the kinda point of the passage is. They've also got this, they've also got this commentary bit. So, so if you, if you bring in the evidence and then, then, then explain what it is, so, so if you were to say, if you were to say, oh, the bee's buzzing is onomatopoeia, this is an example of sensory detail, that would probably get you the two points. If you just said the bee's buzz is onomatopoeia on line two, that's only gonna get you one point, but if you explain that it's sensory detail, that'll get you two. It's when you go further into the connection with the theme, that's when you start getting to the three and four points. So you guys, it is critical, it does not need to be deep, it does not need to be creative, it doesn't need to be like a beautiful out there abstract idea, but it needs to connect something that is definitely on the page to the theme. You need to trace out what, what the technique is, where it's used, and, and how it connects with what you're claiming is the meaning of the passage, or, or what you claim is, is one, is one of the meanings of it. Notice the bottom part, explain how at least one literary element or technique explains how multiple literary elements or techniques, does the difference between points three and four? That's why we're writing at least two body paragraphs with two examples each. In large part, this is just about covering our bases in case we don't get credit for, for, for one of the, for one of the points that we make. Last, we have that sophistication point, where this is based, in practice, it seems like it's given out just for like an essay that's written really well, but if you can actually go a bit deeper and kind of like, you know, maybe, maybe if your two body paragraphs represent two contrasting aspects of the poem, so you know, maybe if you're writing about the amount of sensory detail, then in the next part, you're writing about like, you know, the sensory detail is kind of juxtaposed against a lot of these kind of like more, you know, with abstract philosophical musings or something like that. If you can then discuss the way that those two very different features are connected, that's sophistication. Identifying that there's onomatopoeia, identifying the sensory detail and identifying that there's kind of like, you know, uh, philosophical commentary, not quite sophistication. If you can describe the relationship with the interplay, is the buzzword, between different elements in the passage, that will get you that sophistication point. The other thing you can do, and I think probably the easiest way to steal this sophistication point, or maybe even just guarantee it for yourself, is to do the, either the second or the third item here. If it's not clear how the larger elements interplay, that's kind of okay, that's like point number one. But if you can situate this poem in a broader context, right? Maybe that's even just talking about the history of the oppression of women. If you can tie that down a bit more to other literature about the oppression of women and how that expresses important themes about, um, how that expresses important ideas and themes about the women's liberation movement, that's something that could go a long way towards number two. Alternately, if you can, you know, if you, if you present your interpretation, but you're also able to hint in multiple places, again, I would do it in multiple places, not just one, to be safe. Again, I would do it in multiple places, not just one to be safe, about another possible way that a line could be taken. There's a real art to doing this, you guys. It, it needs to be balanced both between, both between, both between staying on your point and also moving on to, and also presenting something else that, that, that could plausibly work without getting too far off track. All right, so last, you know, the literary argument. You know, I, I just wanted to reiterate really quick before we get to the Q and A. You may not get to your pet, you may not get asked about your pet elements. You got to know all four plus, you know, basically what they are and how they're used and how to write about them. The other big thing with the literary, literary argument is the, sorry, I keep calling it the literary analysis because what I always think of it as the literary argument is if you look at, if you look at the points on here, it's, it, it's really important to avoid the generalizations. That's the difference between the one and two and the three and four. Plus again, the link between, the link between always, when you're bringing up a point, explain how it connects to your thesis. So if you guys have thought out a good thesis according to that formula we had, if you guys then have your topic sentences relate to it, then, then you're using your examples to connect with the topic sentences. It's almost just systematic. You guys will be able to get these points. The reason we're writing multiple paragraphs, the reason we're, we're bringing in multiple pieces of evidence is to make sure that we get credit for at least one. That's all we really need. Writing four pieces of evidence on a point you've already made well doesn't do anything else for you. You only need two pieces of evidence and two paragraphs. Maybe you want to write a third paragraph to play it safe, but I think the best bet is two paragraphs, two pieces of evidence each. All right, cool. So let's jump into the Q and A. My apologies that that went on longer than, my presentation went on longer than expected. I know I had a few questions come in. But yeah, you guys, like I said, I'm happy to discuss any of those questions that we were looking at earlier together. I'm happy to discuss multiple choice strategy more generally. I'm happy to answer particular questions you guys even have about specific books. If you guys aren't sure about certain literary techniques, feel free to ask about those. I have a couple of questions here so far. One is if I could text the, the book my family reads, it's, it's, it's The Great Gatsby. So that's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a 20s classic of American literature. A lot of literature classes do cover it, even a lot of US history classes cover it because it's kind of, it kind of evocative of the Jazz Age when it was written. So, okay, we, we have, we have another question here as well, which is that in this year's digital testing app, one cannot come back to previous questions. What are some strategies for multiple choices for the digital exam? Thank you. Yeah, the, the book just got added in there. Cool, so that's, I, I will, I'll actually need to double check that because when I was working in, but when I, when I was working in the, in the testing profile that I was on, I was able to move back and forth. I, I definitely should double check that point. It seemed like I was able to go, to, to go between the two. So we should probably take a close look there. So I would say though, let's, I guess, let's assume the worst where if, you know, if you really can't go back to earlier questions and can't, and can't change anything, then I would, I would say that your, your best bet is to probably, like, if it, let's say, as we, as we saw, where the first question is like kind of a more general overall picture question, you're going to kind of have to go back and reread the passage, you know, but you'll have the advantage of knowing that you'll be able to see that first question. Then you go back to, to the passage immediately to look back through it. So look, if you have to do a main idea question first, it's not the end of the world. Just try to work through it as closely as you can. Do your process of elimination. I would not spend more than two minutes getting to the end of the first question, even if it's a main idea. So, you know, not to, not, not to dodge the issue, but, but basically like, you know, you, you, like if, if that situation does come up where you can't go back for any reason, make sure that like you've done your process of elimination. You know why the wrong answers are wrong, but don't spend more than about a minute doing it. If you get stuck somewhere, pick it and move on to the next one. Okay, cool. So we have a few more questions coming in as well. We've got a bunch of people asking for book recommendations in particular. Like I said, Great Gatsby is one of my all time favorites. I also really like Crime and Punishment by Feodor Dostoevsky. It's a, it's a, it's a Russian author. It's also a great one because it kind of like deals very directly with a lot of like religious and moral themes that are presented kind of plainly on the page. It's an allegorical story in a lot of ways as well. It's also quite a long book with, with a great deal of different characters and, or sorry, but let me expand on that last point about how it's a lot of times allegorical books where they're expressing like, you know, a, a truth through symbolic characters. It's kind of easier to talk about characters like in a slightly more superficial way there. Someone asked about whether Lord of the Flies, another great one, where it's largely allegorical. It's got a really clear theme and meaning. Just make sure you note, like I remember in that book, I always get confused about all the characters, like who's who. So who's, who's who in terms of the characters? So make sure you know like Piggy versus the other guys and like, you know, what, what different people do in different places, as long as you know the details of it. It's a great reflective evocative book as well. It's another good suggestion. I also really like, it's a tough book, but anything, Sound and the Fury or really anything by William Faulkner is really good from that structural point of view where there's a lot of experimentation going on. But unlike, you know, something like Ulysses or, you know, even something like Waiting for a Good Dough, it's much more like comprehensible. It's a lot less inscrutable. If you can't, if you, if you can't really like follow the plot, like the worst example is like Finnegan's Wake. I don't know, you guys probably would never read this. Like, you know, it's, it's only occasionally read in, in college literature classes, but it's this other James Joyce book with like, you read the Wikipedia page, it's hilarious. It's like, it's like, you know, scholars continue to disagree on what the main plot and who the main characters are in the book after 100 years. So like avoid a book like that, but you know, Sound and the Fury hits a pretty good balance. Absalom, Absalom hits a pretty good balance. There's a few other Faulkner books that are, that are pretty solid where, where they, they're, they're experimental. They're interesting from a stylistic and structural point of view, but they also, they also still have like sort of clear characters. One more question, then, then we actually got to wrap up because the, because these, these sessions are all going really close back to back. And if you guys are in another session afterwards, then I want to be sure you guys are able to get over there. So one other question was, what if you aren't certain of any literary text to support your argument? What should you do? Honestly, again, I hate to dodge a question like this, but, but that's why you guys want to know four to five books. On the literary argument essay, I think you can get away with stuff that's a little bit more of a stretch, whereas you couldn't do that as much with the prose and poetry. You can't do that with the multiple choice. So for me, right, The Great Gatsby is my go-to because if nothing else, I can stitch together an argument just from knowing the characters super well, knowing the situations, knowing the plot work extremely well, knowing how the plot works extremely well. So maybe even more so than knowing four to five generally pretty darn well. It's, it's really good to have one nailed down extremely effectively because that you're going to be able to, to write about in almost situation. For what it's worth, they do also provide you with a list of options. There's a really good chance that you'll, you either have read one of the books on there. You'll probably have read multiple of the books before or at least you're familiar with them because they're kind of iconic. You might have a rough sense of what the, of, of what it's about. If there's nothing you've read and you only have a rough sense, that's your best bet. But again, if you know one really well and like four to five, or, or four to five pretty well, you should be covered. Last question, then, then we got to wrap up. Question, great one. Does referring to another novel work for the sophistication point? Yeah, that's a really fantastic way of establishing the broader context that we're talking about. So, you know, like if we, you know, if we're writing about like, I don't know, if we're, if we're writing again about like, about, about the, the theme of like women's oppression, if we could point to a few other books. I always remember Rose for Emily and Yellow Wallpaper and a few other classics from, from sort of the turn of the, turn of the 20th century. If you can refer to other works and then explain how they're related, make sure, and don't just name drop the other book. Explain actually how it reflects the one that you're writing about, what the connection is between the two. Are they on the same page? Are they different? So, yeah, I think, I think that is a really good sort of practical tangible idea and actually a, a great suggestion. So, all right, we actually got to wrap up for tonight, you guys, but thank you so much for joining. And I believe, I believe the, yeah, they, they sent a, they sent a link to, to my page